One of our board members is a little bit late and we need that board member for a quorum. So if y'all just be patient with us, we should be about a few minutes starting. Twenty-one dash oh seven four eight, other than the ones I've got. If you would, would you give Sonny, give Sonny your, is there anybody else that's going to speak to that? Thank you for joining us, Mr. Barnes. Mr. Barnes, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. You know, there's no doubt in my mind about that, none whatsoever. Okay. All right, it is four. Four oh eight on August the second, Tuesday, August the second, I'm calling this planning board meeting to order. Um. George, would you start us with the invocation? If you please rise.
I follow the chart ever since I was given. To live in this great city. Those members of the city that are here this day. We're grateful opportunity to serve. I pray that I bless us as we. Go in this meeting that will do those things, be pleasing and I cite, we both do things we equitable for everyone that is here. Not that everything is equitable for everyone, but do the things that are best for the growth of this city and for the citizens here. And these blessings we pray for would be that will, may be that son Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Barnes, would you lead us into the place of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Krantz, would you call, roll call, please?
Thank you, sir. Chairman Gilbert.
Here.
Vice Chair Deluge.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Rawls is an excused absence. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Owens is also an excuse absence. We have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Any person wishing to appeal any decision made by the planning board with respect to any manner considered at such meeting will need a record of the proceedings. And for such purpose may need to ensure that verbatim records of the proceedings is made. Which which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based on the Florida statute two eight six. Point zero one zero five. That's that, that's that part of it. Is anybody here have any problems with ex parte communication with any of the. Cases that coming before us this morning or this afternoon? Okay. Now I need a approval of minutes for the July, June seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Can I have a motion and a second?
Make a motion that we approve June seventh, twenty-two minutes.
There a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. We need approval of the minutes for July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two special called meeting. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before we do, I got a question.
Here.
Um, I emailed about this and I either missed the reply or didn't get one. Uh, staff in the motion, uh, at the end of the minutes. Uh, blah, 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 blah. In any disaster to the current home would be on a case by my case basis. Is that a typo or is that a term I'm not familiar with?
It's a typo. My apologies, Mr. Barnes. And I don't recall seeing your email.
I, sorry. Very good. Um, so with that correction, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I hear a second. So. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Um. The, uh, we're now we've moved into the public comment section. Um, I have cards here for that. Um, you have three minutes to speak. And, and. Well, actually, that's the public comments is just towards anything on the board. We have to wait for the, right?
You're a general public comment, sir.
Okay. Yeah, the general, is there any general pub, public comments? Anybody like to speak or present themselves to the board? Seeing none, we'll move past that. Now we move into the regular public business. Case PB twenty-one oh seven, request of extension of time for to submit final plan. Um, Ms. Walsh, would you like to present your?
I would thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lisa Walsh, planning director. This preliminary plat came before you last November, November second. It was approved. Um, the applicant has. Had some difficulties with construction timing and supplies, materials, that sort of thing. Um, and they. Are requesting an extension of the six month period that is indicated in the code. That says that they're supposed to be submitting a final plat within six months of approval of the preliminary one. They realize that this request is outside of the timeframe of the six months initially. But they are respectfully requesting your consideration.
Okay. Any questions of, uh. Ms. Walsh and staff? Sir, hold on just a minute. I'll allow the public to speak. Okay? Thank you. Let me catch up myself here. I'm sorry.
No worries. You're the chairman.
Yeah, but I like to stay on task. Um. Okay. Anybody got any questions of Ms. Walsh? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Um, what is your, um, what is staff's recommendation on this?
The staff's recommendation is for approval.
Okay.
Um, the applicant is making, is making headway. It's not like they're not doing anything. They're just tied up in other processes that they've got to meet. Um.
And this is just an extension of what we've already given them to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. They made the changes that you had suggested at the last meeting and you gave your approval at that time.
That's not.
No, no, it is not. Right. What you have is, is what you have now allows them to begin construction. But they need that six month extension just because it's a, a, a section in the code that requires it.
Mr. Wallace, could you turn on your microphone, pull it down to you, please? Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Okay. Um, okay, I'll go to public speaking then. That it's time. Ah, well, that's all we've got. Okay. There you go. Hang on, let's, let's, we're fixing to go to public speaking when you can ask some questions, okay? You know. Okay, and we'll call on, um, we're gonna go to public speaking and, uh, we'll call to on Andrea Campbell. You were the first one. Put your card in, Ms. Campbell. If you would, when you come to the podium, if you would give your name and your address just for record, please, ma'am.
My name is Andrea Campbell and I'm at twenty-two twelve Palmasia Terrace, the road that you guys. Can you even better now?
Yes.
Um, I saw the sign, so my concern was when I purchased the property two years ago, it was a cul-de-sac for my kids' safety to not have cars speeding up and down. The road and, and now they're saying that they're going to be opening the road to go to Mosley, so then we won't have that any longer.
That won't be, it was not going to go to Mosley. Um, everything that we've seen, I mean, you can see by that, there's no way for it to go all the way through to Mosley with the way, the way that they're doing. Um, the, the houses is you'll still have a cul-de-sac down there.
But how will it be opened up for the houses to be down there?
They'll come down Palmasia to the two houses that are being down on that end. And then the others will be on Mosley, or not actually Mosley, out on Edgemore. And, um, so they're, they're not actually gonna open anything. That's not anything we've done. We've not allowed that. We just, we were talking about two houses down on the end of that cul-de-sac.
And then they just, so, so the cul-de-sac will still be there to just be two additional houses.
Yes, ma'am.
House would be on the backside of.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Alvin Jones.
My name is Alvin Jones. I live at twenty-two hundred Palmasia Terrace. Um. Palmasia Terrace. Is currently zoned R one double A. It's golf club estates. I don't think that there's a reason to change it from R one double A. It was, it was summed that way for a reason. It's. Residential low density. It's, I think it should remain low density. My property, my home is adjacent to the builder's property. Um, I welcome a cul-de-sac. I welcome growth in our city. With a cul-de-sac, people won't be turning away around in my driveway as much. Right? Um, my home is between the property of the builder and what was once Judge Eastmore's home.
Mm-hmm.
The late Judge Eastmore. Um, I feel it. And. When Judge Eastmore was with us, we didn't need a homeowners association. He would let you know if you had a problem. Right? After Judge Eastmore passed, that property was purchased by the late Ed Brooks. Many of you probably know Ed Brooks. He was a stickler for doing things right. He was with the property appraisal office, I believe. He was such a stickler that things be done right, that a fence that Judge Eastmore had built was on my property. He broke it loose from the rest of his fencing and gave me that fence. He wanted to see that things were done right. And the reason I mention that my late neighbors is because I feel if either of those men were with us. This builder would have already been asked to go back to the drawing board. Right? What they're requesting is R one A, a seventy foot width property. Eight of the ten houses on our street. Are wider than seventy feet. All ten of the houses on our street couldn't be built on a seventy foot property with proper setbacks. The builder has said that their property values have gone up in house, places where they built their homes. Even rundown, this is the twenty twenties, even rundown houses, the prop values are going up. If the values don't go up as fast, the tax rate would happen, it won't be as, as high. Um. Let's see, what's the last thing? Basically, um. It's, it's just, it's not suited for what, what we have. Basically, putting R one A houses on our street in our neighborhood is the equivalent of putting tiny houses in our one neighborhood. It, it just, they just don't fit. I want to thank you for listening to our concerns. I know you're going to do whatever you feel is right for the city. But once that, and that builder has promised nice houses on our street. But once it's passed as R one A, they can build whatever suits R one A. They don't have to build nice houses on our street.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Norwood.
James Norwood, twenty-three seventeen Palmasia, Palmasia Terrace. Uh. I guess my first question would be, was this properly advertised for the first meeting? Because this is the first time we saw the sign.
Mm-hmm.
Advertising. Who does the advertising?
Ms. Walsh.
Yes, sir. It was properly advertised both times.
What was it advertised? We did, I mean, the way the current sign is today, it wasn't signed here at my first advert.
I can tell you that the signs were put out. I can also tell you that often our signs are picked up by people that are not part of the city staff.
Well, the first problem that we have is advertising.
Please speak into the microphone, Ms. Norwood.
The first problem I do have is advertising. I mean, about the same, any of us was here. For the first meeting.
I don't recall. I think maybe you were.
So therefore, there's a, so therefore, there's an advertisement issue.
The letter I got said, because I was one hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. Excuse me, when I pointed at you, I was just, I didn't mean, I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm, I'm at fault there. I didn't mean for you to speak. I was just telling you to wait, please. Okay, Mr. Norwood, I'm sorry.
So my first issue is, is there's an advertisement issue. So is the attorney available? But, uh, because I need to understand.
Yes, sir, I'm available.
Ms. Thomas is here.
If, if, if advertisement was not proper. Then is the prior meeting and approval, is it still, uh, is it in compliance?
I have a question for you, Ms. Thomas.
Yes, sir, I heard it. Thank you, Mr. Killer Group.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Um, Ms. Walsh and Ms. Krantz have, as Ms. Walsh stated, they advertised the meeting. It was, um, notice in the newspaper, plus the signs were erected.
Well.
And the signs were erected, um, at the location as it's mandated by statute.
No, it was no sign, there's no, no sign erected. I walked, I walked the, the entire Palmasia Terrace every day. And I didn't see, I did not see any signs posted.
Yeah.
It's a current, there's currently a sign on the, on the corner of Palmasia and Mosley. To notify us. That's why, that's the reason we are here today.
Well, I think most of the property, I mean, I'm speaking out of place, maybe, I don't know, but I think most of the property that's involved in this is. Well, I think most of the property, I mean, I'm speaking out of place, maybe, I don't know, but I think most of the property that's involved in this is on Mosley. At the corner of Mosley and Edgemore.
I'm sorry, it's on the corner, it's on the corner of Palmasia and Hudson, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Uh, but my question is then, if the sign is on Palmasia and Hudson today. Was there a. And I understand you said that people will move them and that kind of thing, but that sign's been there now for almost thirty days. If not longer, and nobody's touched it. So, I'm at, so I have an advertisement issue, first of all, that's my first issue.
Mr. Norwood, I can only go by statements of staff who said that the signs were properly erected.
All the neighbors here, all the neighbors say that, they didn't, they didn't see a sign.
And I have staff that said that the signs were erected.
Okay, I mean, we live in the neighborhood, you know, we didn't see a sign, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stand here and debate that. This, that's not the proper time for that anyway, but also. I'm sort of neutral, because I've not seen any plans, like anything, from what's going to be built there. I know that there's, uh, from what I'm, I guess from what I'm now understanding, there's, uh. Uh, they're asking for a zoning change and I'm taking it and I'm asking the question, have that zoning change been approved?
No, we didn't, on the last board, we, Ms. Walsh, you wanna?
The applicant is not asking for a zoning change, they never have asked for one, it's zone already one, R one A. I have R one A in my records. I also have photographic proof of the signs being posted, and if you were within a hundred and fifty feet of the property, you received a letter. And there was, then you wouldn't have received a letter, but there was also notice posted in the newspaper.
Where's that located?
This says nineteen hundred Mosley Avenue, this was in October, this was from the first hearing.
Well, also, like you said, you're not within a hundred and fifty feet of the property, or you wouldn't have got any notification.
Right, so my next question then is, uh, is there any? Uh, what size of the housing are they talking about building in a thousand sites?
From the minutes, from the meeting in November, the applicant stated that the minimum square footage would be about twelve hundred square feet.
There is, that's not compatible with that neighborhood. And we're talking about putting two houses right on Palmasia Terrace in that cul, where the cul-de-sac is today. Full house, yeah, okay, but there's, that's not even, that's not compatible to the neighborhood.
Okay. Ms. Nord, can you wrap up for me, you're way over three minutes.
Okay, uh, nobody's answered my question yet, though, that's that's my, I'm here for information.
Okay, and and I understand that, but after this meeting, or we're over, if you can talk to Ms. Walsh, she can give you all that information. Because all we're here for today is grant them an extension of what they've asked for. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at, I mean, I understand your, where you're at. And um, that's, but that's where we're at today, we're just, we're trying to grant an extension for for what they're working through.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the board? Oh, I'm sorry, Jessica Smith, I'm very sorry, I shuffled them wrong. If you would give your name and address, please, ma'am, for the record.
Jessica Smith, two two one five Palmasia Terrace. Um, I I understand that you said that this is only for the extension. Signs on Mosley do not notify people on Palmasia Terrace, and I understand that. By law, you don't think if we're a hundred, within a hundred and fifty feet that it matters, but it really, it really does matter. So now we feel at an extension meeting, we have to say, hey, we never even knew this was going on until it was too late. So my question is, is it already too late? Is this done? All you're doing is requesting an extension for something you've already approved, these houses are are being built, no matter what now.
I don't, I don't think that's actually what we did in the last meeting, I think that we had to, we had to. Yeah, we did, okay, I just have to look back, we approved it, so um.
I think, I think the general upset is that none of us knew until it had already gone through all of the changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and so, so that's upsetting, and Mosley signs don't have anything to do with. Palmasia Terrace, our street doesn't go out to Mosley, so why, how would we know that our lives, I. You know, how would we know that something on Mosley was going to affect us on Palmasia? So that's not fair to pretend that we would be informed of something over on Mosley on Palmasia. So I understand this is not the right format, but we didn't, we didn't, none of us knew to be able to express ourselves in the meetings where maybe decisions would have been made. That, you know, because no one on the street wants this, and at least if there's going to be houses on the street, they need to match the houses that are already there. You know, fifty year old, twenty two hundred square foot brick houses, so that you don't look down our street and see shotgun. You know, houses, that that was my main thing, if the street's not gonna go through, that's great, that makes me feel a lot better. Because I bought a dead-end street house so that my grandkids could play, you know, so. That's all I I really wanted to say, is that I feel like we didn't get to come here and and say things in the meetings where it mattered.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. I'll give you another thirty seconds.
If you look up the county property appraisers office, Golf Club Estates is all R one double A. Hundred foot wide properties, not R one A. Um, that that's. So if they have not requested a zoning change, they need to request one. Or not build in the manner they're planning to build, because they, it doesn't meet current zoning.
Okay, well, according to staff with, I mean, that, and that's all we got to go on.
Yes, sir.
Is what staff, is what staff is going in her record.
I'm sure she can bring up the county office and on the board.
But I'm saying, I mean, we're going by what we have. Here, if, and again, if, and I don't mean to sound. Uh, harsh, but you know, in this situation, there is the appeal process.
Yes.
So you can come back, as and come back and appeal what we've, what we've done.
I'd just rather do it right the first time, ask the builder to go back to the drawing board.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Walsh, do you have anything further? Okay. I'm gonna close the public speaking part of this and open it up to board members discussion.
Mister Chairman, maybe if staff could advise, um, if we grant the extension. There's, there's no further appeals process for these folks, is there? This isn't going before the the commission, the city commissioner, it's already been approved, right? We're just extending what's already been approved.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? What's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to say personally that, uh, I was not here when this passed, planned on being here, we had cows out. And that, just the bottom line. Um, if I lived in Palmasia right now. And the houses that I know that are there compared to what they're planning on building, what I'm seeing here, I would not be a happy camper. That's just the bottom line, and except I wasn't here at the first meeting, but uh. That's where I stand.
Mister Chairman, I will follow that comment up by saying, while I, I don't disagree at all with what was said. And I too don't believe I was here for this, because this is a ring and a bell. We have approved this for a builder, um, so when you just cause. To stop them in the middle of it.
Exactly.
So, uh, they're they're not asking for anything that wasn't already approved to them. And I I don't necessarily agree or disagree at this point, that's not my position. Um, we've just, we've approved something, and we're not really changing anything by granting an extension. And I, I find it awfully interesting, um, if we don't grant an extension. For something that was already approved by the board at a prior date.
Exactly. Mr. Wallace, turn on your microphone, bring it down to you, please.
The people that are questioning now, when it comes before the, uh, commission. They can come then and voice their concerns, right? And the commission can turn the whole deal down.
Uh, that's my, uh, Ms. Thomas, can you answer that question?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I meant.
It's not, it's not a done deal.
Right. And and because, I mean, the the audience sitting here today, um, you know. Because we don't personally agree with things sitting up here on this board, um, we can't always voice that opinion. Um, we can, we have to go by what the law says and what the codes say, and what goes by that, I mean, we can't just. Willy nilly turn things down, um, then we have the other side that's coming in and and, you know, you just can't willy nilly do things. So I just want to say that, I mean, y'all looking at me, you know, I know I'm sitting up here in the hot seat, because I'm the one talking. But that's, that's what happens to us, okay, I mean, we're we're citizens of this county and this city too. And just because we, duck again, just because we, our personal feelings, we just can't deal with them that way. You have something to say, Mr. Wallace?
If we grant the extension, the extension is for them to get their ducks in a row and get the plat. To a final form, this is not a final form for plat. They they will fix things that need fixing, but. Uh, that's not gonna make these people happy, you know.
Right, so, with that being said, you know, you have, you still have the chance to go before the city commission.
Real quick, Mister Chairman, if you don't mind, can staff, uh, give us a breakdown of where this would go from here if we grant the extension? So they have six months to submit a final plat for review, does that final plat come back before the board? At which time we can hear everybody's questions, concerns, uh, and approval, or am I mistaken?
It's my understanding in our code that the approval of the preliminary plat allows them to begin site work.
Correct.
And that timeframe would allow them to establish that final plat and bring it back before you.
So there's no, once you begin site work, there's no denying the project?
That's correct.
Alright, so that was my understanding also.
Everything that they are doing on this piece of property is permitted in the code, permitted by the zoning designation. And the builder has. Stated in previous meetings that those square footage of the houses would be a minimum of twelve hundred square feet. I can also tell you that the last seven or eight permits that I've received from this builder in other parts of the city. Have averaged seventeen hundred square feet.
Yes, um, just to piggyback off of what Mr. Wallace said, uh, he made a point that. Uh, folks that still had an objection could go to the city commission to voice that objection. At this point, what objection would they voice of any merit? There's not one, to my understanding.
Not really.
Okay. So.
Everything that they are doing is permitted by code.
Correct.
So can we look back and we're saying, or you're saying that the, um, the zoning is one thing, and you're saying that.
Yes, we can. Might take a few minutes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, from Sw.
I don't, I don't have a description on here, so I don't know what is plat, but it's the old Spalding property.
No, sir, it's down from the old Spalding property, it's on the corner.
This was, this was.
Yeah, this, this was Spalding property.
She bought all of that property that cut it up in nineteen hundred.
And they cut. Part of it all.
I stand corrected, because I thought Spalding property was up a little bit.
Was the Spalding property part of that subdivision that?
I do know that. Right, it's it's, um, no, because that place.
Say it again.
Yeah, the old Spalden house has been sold.
You, no, 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 that's not what I'm asking, I'm asking is the Spalding property in total. Part of the plat that the gentleman over here is.
On the corner, that corner piece, or the part where the house was?
This whole Spalding property. Now they've cut a piece of it off. Right? And they're keeping the house down on that part, and this is part of the other.
This was always extra property, that hole, when you get to Edgemore, and then you're going west on Edgemore. So it was that hole, L, which?
But where I'm going is, is its property, if you look, see it in orange there? Is this property part of the subdivision that the gentleman was stating? Was always R one double A?
No.
Excuse me.
So. Where's, where's, where's Edgemore?
Alright, you you're running your cursor across, if you go down there and click on this property, go right there, what's his own?
R one double A?
See, and the point I'm trying to get to you. This.
No?
No.
Got a question, spit it out.
No, no, I don't.
Okay. I mean, it's.
And that's what you, uh, how you read.
It's R one double A, I apologize, I'm on the application, it says R one A, but it is R one double A, and it was not changed previously.
That's where I'm going.
Okay.
So does that mean that something was done wrong in that advertisement?
No.
Should they not have been allowed?
The zoning, the zoning is not. Um, it was not in question on the advertisement, the zoning is only for the subdivision.
Right.
Right.
But that's, that's all.
Or I'm sorry, the advertisement was only for the subdivision. And everything that they are doing, that they are proposing is permitted under that category, that zoning category. R one double A.
Mister Chair? Audience, could you have them come to the microphone so I can hear what they're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Just come up and tell just what you just said, please.
R one double A requires one hundred foot wide lots, ten thousand square foot lots, not seven, seventy foot wide, seven thousand foot. R one A is seventy, seven thousand, R one double A is one hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, thank you. Did you, do you get that, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. So. No, I, 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 you go talk into my phone.
Okay, so how we need to verify that?
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Can I ask, are we waiting on dawn?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mister Lee, can I ask a question?
Yes, Mister Norwood, you can ask a question.
James Norwood, year twenty three seventeen, Palmasia Terrace, how long have this property been zoned? Uh, R double A, one A, double A?
The only way I have to answer that is by looking at the sales tab on this record that Sunny has pulled up. Uh, there's an ordinance down at the bottom, the third one from the bottom is nineteen fifty five, now no image, okay. Okay. From nineteen fifty five. Right. I don't see any other indication on that list of any other ordinances. We did, my understanding, we did. You don't think so?
I didn't think we got something until seventy six. I moved here in eighty one, and it was just a few years prior to that, I think it was seventy six.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, are we allowed to table this case and move on to our next quarter business to return afterwards?
I don't see why we can't, the motion to table to move on to the next and come back.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we table this case until the end of our scheduled business to resume it at that time.
Go here a second. All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, we're moving on to. Ms. Krantz, is that PB twenty two twenty, am I saying that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, they're just the homes back. Hang on, Ms. Thomas, we just tabled that, waiting on you to come back, but, I mean, we'll, we'll go ahead and. I guess we can come back to it that quick.
Can I remove my motion, Mr. Holmes, or do you want to just move on to twenty two twenty?
We'll just move on to it, we'll take with a minute, I don't think.
Sorry, Mr. Holmes, we didn't know you'd be so quick.
Ms. Walsh?
This next case is for the annexation. Future land use and zoning designation of a parcel at nine three four South State Road nineteen. Most of us know it as Messers Bay and Temple. They have annexed uh for a couple of reasons, mostly because they are requesting water and sewer. And because they want to redevelop the property as a different commercial use. I understand they're planning a take five oil change. Facility there.
Yeah, it's a small piece of property for that, but they still have to come before us.
Yeah.
To change that, wouldn't they? I mean, we're looking for an annexation now, right?
To come before you to change what, the zoning and land use?
Yeah.
Um, that's all part of this, so you would make three different motions? In your staff report?
I got it. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, that's okay, your staff report is, the first motion that you would make would be for the annexation. The second would be for the land use and the third for the zoning. Um, the surrounding, uh, sorry, let me back up a little bit, the existing zoning in the county that they have now is. Of C one neighborhood commercial and their. Future land uses commercial also. They're proposing commercial land use and C two zoning. For the redevelopment. The only piece of property that is contiguous to them, that is, uh, of course in the city already, is to the west. And that is some uh strip stores adjacent to Walmart. And those have a commercial land use with a C two zoning as well. The properties to the north, south and east have a, a variety of commercial. And urban reserve county land use and county agricultural zoning. Essentially, yes, ma'am, and as a water and sewer connection. Staff will answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this? Saying none, I'll close the public part of the speaking and, uh, or the public part of this meeting and move, put us pleasure to board any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, at your will, I'll make a motion.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Ball.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve the request to annex the property known as nine three four South State Road nineteen. Uh, into the city.
Go here a second.
I'll second it.
The motion is that we annexed property into the city. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous? Do I have a, um. Motion from the. Uh, board for the staff recommendation to request to amend the future land use of the map from Putnam County Commercial CR to. The city of Palaca Commercial.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
That's motion, second, all those in favors, say aye. It's unanimous, Ms. Krantz? Uh, the request to rezone the Putnam County Commercial Neighborhood C one to the city of Palaca Commercial Intensive C two. Do I have a motion as such?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Second.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, all those approved, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those can't, motion passes unanimously, Ms. Krantz? That's done, done. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, may I ask for Sunny's benefit that we identify the people that are on Zoom so that she will have it from her records?
Okay, um. The, uh, do I need to read those to you, Sunny?
Um, they haven't spoken, so if they were asked to remain anonymous and not be part of this proceeding, so I don't see a problem with them being on there. I would leave that to the city attorney.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need to identify the people on Zoom?
Are they voting on the, are they voting on the motion?
No, miss.
No, ma'am, these are people that are, that are, um, on Zoom listening to the meeting themselves, they haven't identified or asked to speak. So I don't think we need to identify them.
The only reason why Ms. Walsh even brought it up, Mr. Chair, is we were advised by a fellow staff member that there was an applicant appearing via Zoom and that they were applicants. But if the applicant's not been ready to speak or participate in the proceedings, then I think they can remain anonymous.
Okay, wow.
I agree.
Okay, alright, then. Do I need a motion to go back to the, um. The prior?
Probably not, but Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we pick up case PB twenty one dash zero seven.
Okay. Second emotion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Holmes?
For the record, Don Holmes, uh, you had a question regarding development standards in the R one double A zoning district. So that's found in, uh. Your code section ninety four dash one four one. R dash one double A single family residential district, if you go down to the development standards, which is sub figure F. It states development standards for all uses except PUD, the following development standards shall apply for all uses in the R one double A district except PUDs. For PUD C section ninety four two thirty three, maximum density, three dwellings units per acre. Minimum lot area, ten thousand square feet, minimum lot width, eighty feet, maximum lot coverage thirty five percent. Maximum structure height thirty five feet, minimum yards, front twenty five, side ten, rear thirty. Those I believe are the. Those are the setbacks, right?
Put the plat up. Thanks.
Now the question I think you have is, is this the new plat? So unless it's a PUD, I mean, well, I'll, I'll, I'll not be the attorney since I've been chastised about that, and I don't want to disturb Mr. Wallace. But anyway, you want this for your record, I'll.
Please. Can, can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Walsh.
The new plat, you said yes. That's pretty, I asked you if this was the plat we saw last time, and you told me yes.
Yes, sir, I did, that.
Okay, so. It has not changed since we saw it last, excuse me.
That's correct, it has not changed.
My reference to new was, uh, clarified, I was trying to determine whether or not this was a pre-existing plat of record.
Yeah.
It might have predated zoning, um, and if there were existing lots of records, so when I said new, I meant. Something that was, you know, something that was proposed after the effective date of the zoning code.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Staff, can I ask just for clarity, is this a PUD?
It is not.
Okay, um, staff, does the. Proposed plat meet the zoning requirements for your understanding?
To my understanding, I would like to point out that the two lots. On the north edge.
Mm-hmm.
Are a little over seven thousand square feet, but the remaining lots are. I'm sorry, the, uh, not, the la, the lots on the north side are a little over seven thousand square feet. There's two lots, number one and two, that face Mosley, that are under ten thousand square feet, but the remaining lots are over ten thousand square feet.
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
And here we're at seventeen, sixteen.
There's nothing there. Well, we got one on the corner here, it's eighty eight. And everything else is under eight.
Okay.
They came in thinking they were R one A.
I'm thinking that's what it is.
So, so my question from the back room of this, uh.
Thomas.
I'm staying here, but my question from the back of the room, and you can repeat the question. Are you, are you certain of what the zoning category is? I mean, obviously this is not mine.
No, sir, I am not certain, I will going to have to do some more research.
So I think that's the first thing, the first thing needs to, needs to happen is, we need to determine specifically. Obviously, the property appraiser maps are not controlling, they are for reference only, and the property appraiser maps are not, uh. Basically, it could probably document for, for any purpose other than property appraisal allocation of taxes or corations. But, so I.
I see you, Ms. Ball.
I don't know, I'm not trying to research personally, I don't have an opinion, I don't know what the zoning is, I'm just saying that obviously. Before this goes any further, some, there needs to be clarification, so I need to determine what exactly.
Ms. Barnes, excuse me, Ms. Barnes.
Ms. Walsh, when is the applicant's original six month deadline expire?
Six months after November second.
Okay.
Of twenty twenty one.
That's way over.
So it would have expired May, May second.
Yeah, so they're just coming back to us now and asking us for extension.
They, they did, they did ask, I mean, they submitted their letter. July fourteen, so they were.
Two months past. Still past it. Alright. Well, with that being said. I'm just going to close this, uh, part of it and. The board asks, what's the pleasure, oh, hang on, Mr. Wallace?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Since they're two months old, should have been back in May. Did this thing die back in May because there was no final plat submitted for the order, you know?
I'm not certain.
Ms. Thomas? Um, Mr. Wallace, you need to turn your microphone. Miss Thomas, did you hear, did you hear that question, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, I did hear it.
Okay. Do you?
She did hear it or did?
She did, I think, but she's.
Okay.
Yes, I, I did hear your question, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, ma'am.
The time period for asking for, uh, requesting the extension, um, expired. Um, however, the, the letter was submitted to staff in July, and Ms. Walsh thought. That it was proper to bring it before the, uh, the board, planning board. However, you can make a decision based on the fact that it had expired at the time. That, um, that it died at that time. And then they can bring that before the commission for a ruling on your, um, decision.
So, so if I understand right, it, it died back in May.
Yeah.
It expired, yes.
Ms. Thomas, I don't have the code in front of me, I can go look, but my question is, how, how is the. How is, does the ordinance, is the ordinance worded? So that the six month extension was thought to be necessary, in other words. Does the order specifically state that a, that approval of a, that preliminary plat approval of a subdivision is valid for only six months? Expires at that time, how is it worded?
I'm looking it up right now.
Go down to the next section, I'm gonna go down below, so I, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You are in seventy four dash eight?
Ma'am?
What are you looking at?
I was looking at seventy four one two is what she has up on the screen, that's all I'm looking at, I'm.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, too.
Go to the third, go to the next one, Sunny, I don't see there, whoa.
Um, seventy four dash eight?
Eight?
Yeah, look at that one.
Can you go back to eight, please? Okay, wait.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, no. Action requirements.
Alright, so it says that it's under sub figure B seventy four nine, it says it shall also be required that the final plat. Be submitted to the planning board not later than six months after approval of the preliminary plat. Otherwise, such conditional approvals shall become null and void unless the extension of time is applied for and granted by the planning board. So there's what your operative language is, I'll stop being lawyer again.
You can't help it, don't worry about it.
So back to my question.
Yes, sir.
It's dead.
That's what I would assume by what was just read.
Yes, sir.
It's dead already, so we really don't, I mean.
So. Still questioning, they, they need to start with their submitted. Again. The, the whole, Mr. Holmes, the whole thing or just the plat?
Start with Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Thomas.
Ms, Mr. Wallace?
Do they start the whole pro, ma'am?
Well, for the first thing, I think we need to determine is the correct, uh, what is the zoning district? I think that is the. The key point here. It was R one double A or R one A, so.
Right, and once that's.
Well, Ms. Thomas, it doesn't, this is it, but, um, it doesn't really matter with that. I mean, according to what, I mean, and you're the lawyer, I'm asking a question, I'm not telling you. Um, you know, it doesn't really matter with that, the, the fact is it's dead right now, right? I mean, they'd have to, I mean, I understand what you're saying, they have to, the, the staff needs to go back and rectify the, the zoning part of it. But as far as what we're trying to do today, really and truly, there's nothing to do because it's dead, correct?
Correct, you can deny it because it is, um, it expired in May, I guess, second, is that six, um?
Yes, ma'am, somewhere right around there.
Okay, and. And, um, I was saying that, but I was answering Mr. Wallace's question as to how it could be remedied. Or the first thing we need to do is, if they go back and want to start the process again, is determine the correct zoning district.
Yes, ma'am.
But, yes, to your, uh, question and yes, to Mr. Wallace's question.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
But, you're welcome.
I'm, I'm not, my question is not even to do with the zoning. It's what has to be, what is dead? Is just the plat dead or is the whole application dead?
Well, the application was the plat, wasn't it?
Okay, so for clarification, Don Holmes again, I, I think, I mean, if I understand what you're getting to, Mr. Wallace, and it scares me to think that I might understand what you're getting.
I'm glad you caught up.
But, having said that, uh, I think you're bringing to mind and your question relates to whether or not there's any sort of, uh, there be any sort of prohibition upon them coming back with the same application for preliminary plat approval as a result of the fact that their first preliminary, uh, plat approval became null and void. And my, my initial opinion is that there'd be nothing to stop them from coming back because that language simply says that, that the, um, the conditional approval of the plat becomes null and void, doesn't say that they're forever barred from resubmitting the same thing. So my initial read would be...
No, I didn't, I didn't say that they would ever, they would be barred from ever submitting again. But the plat... What?
They'd have to resubmit, they'd have to do, they'd have to re, they'd have to start the process over again. And to then, on Ms. Thomas's point, that would give everybody an opportunity to confirm the, the zoning and make sure that, um, that the zoning is, uh, consistent with their lot configuration. It's also going to open up the question of what happens if they go with a PUD? And are you able to vary the lot standards, you know, uh, under the PUD, PUD process, so, but that's a whole different ballgame.
Short and sweet, the whole thing's dead.
Well, I guess your use of the term dead is a little bit concerning to me. This particular application is null and void, right? Right? But it, but it can be resurrected, so it's...
Yeah, sure, but right now, null and void.
I agree with, I agree with you, write that down if you would.
I'm going to.
Mr. Holmes?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Um, also, I wanted to bring to, uh, the board's attention, the minimum, um, square footage.
Right.
Ordinance that you reviewed at your last meeting and thought about that, you know, and it's gone through the first reading of the commission. So that also would have an impact on this, um...
She's talking about dwelling si- uh, house size.
Or the house size or the, or the overall size of the lots, too?
Dwelling size.
Dwelling size.
Okay.
But I, that, I think, was it eight-fifty or something, so, um, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
I believe it was eight-fifty, heated and cooled was what they approved on first reading, I believe.
Everything about...
But I think for the R, R, R-one's manager, I think it was twelve hundred, wasn't it? Ms. Walsh?
Eight-fifty for, my recollection was the twelve hundred applied in the historic district. But I thought that, and that's recollection, I'm going by memory, but I thought R-one, R-one A was... Was all eight-fifty, minimum heated and cooled.
Okay.
Heated and cooled or heated? Heated. You said heated and cooled or just heated, I mean, that's...
Heated.
Condition space.
No, I mean, you split that hair at last meet, Ms. Barnes.
Condition space. If anybody in Florida right now is building a house without air conditioning, then...
Same thing I thought, the last thing we did, Mr. Holmes, okay. So actually, we need to, we need to go ahead and deal with what we got. And the, uh, application for extension, even though the thing's dead, it's come before us and we need to deal with it. Do I hear a motion from the board as to how we do that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the request for extension, uh, as submitted in PB case twenty-one dash oh-seven.
Do I hear a second? Second? The motion is second that we deny the, the case for PB? I don't know, can't see today. PB twenty-one dash oh-seven. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, nay? Motion passes? Or no, motion's denied, excuse me?
Did you vote nay? I'm sorry, I heard you say...
No, I did not. No. I said unanimous, y'all quit. Y'all were trying to confuse me. Between the audience, Ms. Thomas and everybody else, I feel like I'm in...
You know, we're...
Twilight Zone.
So you don't want to get too...
Well, I'm sorry. So with that being said, motion's denied. Is there anything else before, that needs to come before the board?
I'd just like to mention something. These, these folks here that live on Palmasia, they, where the notification for the zoning was changing and so forth, did not see it. Now that we know that, is there any way that we can make sure that staff understands that there's only one in and out over there and the notification was there? Really, I mean, I know legally, it's right. But morally, I don't think it is because they didn't see it. I wouldn't have seen it if it was in my neighborhood. I think we need to make sure, if this comes up again, which I'm sure it probably will, that it is proper notification for in and out of that neighborhood be posted.
Yeah.
I was the only one that got a letter last year.
Okay.
I know that next time, I'll notify my name.
Okay. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, in the agenda, we have an item number six that doesn't make sense to me, what is that?
Yeah. But that's the same thing.
Well, it's a different address. Or, excuse me, I might not, no.
Same thing, well, it's a different address, but it's PB twenty-two twenty. At the agenda? Yeah.
Case number is a typo, Ms. Walsh? Ma'am, I believe the case number is a typo.
I believe it is also.
A what?
I don't have...
Okay. Well, it's the same thing, it was the same case, it was just a different address.
We have three cases to discuss then?
No, sir, it was just a comment, do you want me to take it? This is the rezoning that was advertised, that was pulled from the agenda, it was placed under comments, I'm trying to refresh my memory.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sunny. It, well, it was, it was, the, the case number is a typo. The address is not.
Okay.
There was an application made for rezoning for that address and it was withdrawn.
Okay.
Okay.
And I had brought that to concern Mr. Chair, I'd said if anyone was, if you're having seen the notification, we should probably just mention in the comments that it had been withdrawn, but seeing no one, um, seeing the majority of the people in the audience have gone, I...
Well, wait a minute. Ms. Kitchens is still here, do you have something to say to that? Never mind. Okay. With that being said, staff have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion for adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Me.
We have a second. Motion is a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.